Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator/Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed Department Directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator/Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County: It's Life Well Run.
Welcome to our November 14th Legislative and Human Resources Committee. Do we have any public comment for today? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the October 24th--
Support.
It's moved by Commissioner Corbett, supported by Commissioner Vaughn. Onto item--
Oh.
Oh, all in favor?
Hi.
I'll oppose.
Hi.
Sorry about that. Onto item three, Community Development and Housing Commission Performance Measurement, five-minute update.
Yes, thank you very much. Five-minute update today is probably the last time you'll see me speaking for Community Development and Housing Commission since the time ended while I was still interim director. And we have Susan Shree Gillespie and Darryl Singleton here from our new Community Action, Kent County Community Action Department, to observe, learn, and get prepared for next year when they'll be making this presentation. I want to talk briefly in our five minutes about our significant accomplishments this year, and then talk a little bit about the performance measurements. In terms of community development, one of the big things we accomplished this year was we worked with the local task force of representatives from townships and local municipalities as well that are in our program to discuss and determine a new formula for our CDVG funding. That was highly successful. We agreed that we were going to move to a three-year pilot of an RFP process to ensure that we have larger projects, spend our money more efficiently and effectively. And we can talk, I'll talk a little bit about that when we hit our PM highlight. And then we also prepared for and completed the merger with Community Action Agency, which was a significant undertaking by all of our staff. So we were happy to successfully get that done with a huge team of support from the county administration and others. For the housing commission, the merger that we prepared for and had to implement, but also, we maintained a utilization rate for our vouchers at over 90%. I believe we're at 94. And in this market, that was, I think, a high success. Rental rates continue to go up. The fair market rents that HUD allows us to rent houses at are not keeping up with the market. So we have to do a lot of outreach to landlords and work with certain landlords to want them to stay engaged in the program, because frankly, they could rent their, for more money than we're able to pay if they were to cancel our voucher agreements. In terms of the actual performance measures, one that we did not meet this year was the 1.5 spend rate. We'd been, as a department, straggling that one for a number of years at 1.49. This year, due to some inclement weather in the spring and some projects being delayed, we did not make that, and we were at 1.58. But because we've been so close and under the gun for years, that is why we had created this task force with local units to talk about how we could spend our funding in a more streamlined manner. So we shouldn't see that changing this year. We met with local units this past week and the orientation, and that went well. And so we expect that one to be completed. The other one, in terms of projects, housing units getting rehabbed, because we were short a person this year for inspections, we had to transition our housing and rehab specialist to HQS inspector. Time was not spent on that project, but it was making sure we were, trying to make sure we were in compliance with our HQS vouchers on the housing commission. So that is the reason we didn't meet that. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I know this is a five-minute update, and so we'll go from there.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Just thinking, Chair. I've got a couple of questions on your measurements here, on the number of rehab projects. You had 105. What do those run apiece? And then on the bottom here, you have cost for completed rehab project. Are those the same things?
So those are our contract with HRS, Home Repair Services, where we give them funding about $200,000 to $300,000 annually, depending on the amount of money we have in our program income. And they work with lower-income homeowners across the county, 80% of area median or less, to do projects. A few years ago, we switched that from a $3,000 limit to a $10,000 limit, and we allowed it to become a grant instead of a loan repayment, because we had seen the price of work have to go up and needed to get some funding out the door. And that's been highly successful. They've done a great job for us. Projects are all over the county. And so we did 135 with HRS this year, and the average was 55.07 per unit. They did a lot of roofs, a lot of subjects, things like that, that were more significant than in past years.
Okay, just want a little insight, a little more detail on it, and I appreciate that. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Two quick questions. How many folks are on our housing voucher waiting list or the units? And then, you know, you alluded to the fact that, you know, we have to work with landlords because of the amount of the voucher. Have we had an experience where somebody has waited a long time to get a voucher and then hasn't been able to find a unit to take it?
Yeah, we've had people return their vouchers after six months because they were unable to locate housing units. That has happened. List is well over 400 still, though. So we have 529 vouchers. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, a number of, a third are identified for those in the child welfare system for family reunification. A third are identified for homeless veterans, and then a third are open-ended. Those are round numbers. So in terms of transitioning through our third that are open-ended, we have over three times as many people on our waiting list as we do actual vouchers. So this year, we did a cleaning up of the waiting list, and so we saw that shrink from over 1,000 to about 400, but we still have a lot of people.
What kind of follow-up happens with the folks that return their vouchers? With great despair? I mean, that people are waiting, what, years to get a voucher, and they get a voucher, and then they can't find a landlord to take it? So they back to the end of the line, or do they give up? I mean, what do folks do when they don't, can't find a place to take the voucher?
Most people, I'd have to give you the details of if they lose their voucher permanently, because I'm not sure, certain of the answer to that. But it's heartbreaking for a number of people, because they can't find anybody, a landlord, and they are distraught, no question. So, all right.
Commissioner Corbett?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your report, Matthew. You did a great job. So our utilization of voucher rate is 92, and then 94, and you expect it to be 90 again in '17. Why don't, why don't you move that number up a little bit, to 95?
Yeah, because a number of years ago, we were actually, you can see, at 77.
I see that.
And sequestration, at the federal level, was a reason for that. So we had to actually stop when a voucher would be not renewed or terminated or some sort. We would not fill it intentionally, because we were not guaranteed that we would be getting rental assistance funds to come in. You still held the voucher in your portfolio. You just let it go dormant. So at the current situation in Congress right now, and I don't feel comfortable, I mean, we want to maximize our utilization, but there's not certainty that we will be able to get housing assistance dollars for our clients. And so I'm just being prudent, conservative in how we manage that, because we don't want to be able to, we don't want to not have money out there that we, or vouchers out there that we can't pay landlords.
So, quick follow-up, a big question here, and if you don't have an answer, that's fine. In your opinion, are, you know, our market's really tight, and affordable housing's a big concern in the community. What would Matthew do to help solve that affordable housing problem?
Well, it's a combination of supply and demand, right? We need more supply, but producing the right supply.
Well, they're building apartments all over the city, but they're not--
Yeah, and that, so it's a long conversation that has lots of facets to it, but it's about density and what people are willing to live. And we have lots of opportunities in the course six still to develop. So we got to find the right projects, the right developers, and the right incentives and disincentives to get it done, so, yeah. Thank you. Thanks.
Commissioner Brede?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions in regards to lead paint. And I'm wondering, in the rehabilitation of these houses, are lead-safe work practices being followed? How is the paint being addressed, is it at all? And then, can CDVG funds be used to remediate lead in pre-1978 homes?
Yeah, thanks for those questions. In terms of remediation, it's always done in a lead-safe manner as one of our, when we put specs out. Our Inspector Miguel Reyes has a high level of lead training that he's gone through, so for clearance and things like that. So that's always done. Yes, CDVG funds can be used for rehabilitation and getting homes lead, lead abated. So that is an eligible expenditure. We worked with Grand Rapids Township this year, and we're still working on the details with the city of Grand Rapids to be able to do lead assessments throughout the county, out county, where anyone who has a potential lead concern, we could do an assessment for them, and that would be as a grant. And then, once we get that assessment, then we could plan for what kind of work needs to be done for mediation. So, yeah, we can do that. And because Grand Rapids has much more expertise in this than we do, because they have lead grants directly from HUD, it made more sense to partner with them versus us having to set up all those systems again. So that's going on. And then the housing quality standards, HQS, for the housing commission, one of the requirements is ensuring that there's not chip paint, things like that, in the homes, to make sure that lead exposure is limited. So in our HQS process, we do look for that as well, and would make, we would certify that house if those kinds of things were found by the inspector.
Okay. It's great to know that those things are already going on in our community, too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Just a follow-up to that, Matthew. Can CDVG funds be used to actually remove lead contamination from soils as opposed to just securing it?
Yes. It all gets down to the spec and to the program you create and your own local policies, but we can abate and work through that process.
So actually remove, when it gets into the ground surrounding the house, you can actually remove it?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily the best practice always. Sometimes it's putting lush greenery on that, on that, to absorb and to cover up and do other things that would, I'm not an expert, but yeah, we can work with that situation to get that resolved, though, with the funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matthew? All right. So much for your question. Onto item four, Fiscal Services Performance Measurement Review. Francine here, for fiscal.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about fiscal services today. Fiscal services is comprised of seven different divisions. They are the accounting, the budgeting, the payroll, purchasing, fleet services, risk management, and central services. In the boardroom today, I have the division heads from fiscal services here, along with myself, to answer any questions you may have about our performance measures and our department operations. Today, I'm going to talk about how our work in fiscal services aligns with the board priorities, and go over a few key performance metrics, some significant accomplishments, some key collaborations, and a look ahead at what we anticipate in the future. Our mission statement is a brief summary of who we are and what we do. We work to provide a cost-effective financial management system that facilitates sound financial planning and reporting while safeguarding the county's assets from loss and to provide support services to other county departments. A priority of fiscal services is to have stable revenues. We work closely with county departments to assist with acquiring grants, contributions, and other sources of revenue. In addition, we provide supports to ensure that grant and other requirements are met to safeguard the continued funding. Fiscal services completes the annual county audit and single audit reports accurately and timely, and we meet all state requirements to receive full revenue share funding. Fiscal services continues to leverage resources to provide services to departments. Efficiencies come in the way of pushing the envelope, and combining efforts and collaborating with other departments and governmental entities. We develop a budget that provides a spending plan for efficient use of county resources. We leverage volume with purchases. We utilize technology efficiently and provide support and assistance. We continue to increase transparency, and we are working to provide information which is frequently requested online. Fiscal services works to promote a safe working environment for county employees and citizens. The risk management division conducts loss control inspections, emergency situation drills, and ergonomic assessments for employees on a regular basis. In addition, the purchasing division is the administrator of the Kent County Fire Commission, and they provide financial support and fire apparatus for many local communities. Fiscal services works to promote citizen participation by increasing transparency and providing data that is useful, informative for the citizens of Kent County. Financial transparency and county incentive program information is posted on the Access Kent website. The financial information includes the budget summary, financial overview, the comprehensive annual financial report, the single audit report, the pension plan audit, the VIBA financial statements, the VIBA actuarial report, and the VIBA Trust Public Act 530 compliance report. The county incentive program inclusion with accountability and transparency data, cooperation, collaboration, and consolidation information, and unfunded accrued liability plan information. All of this information is provided for citizens of Kent County and other users. In addition, posting this information complies with state public act requirements. Bid opportunities and solicitation, status updates, and surplus goods for sale on the internet are also posted. We are provided information online that is frequently requested in FOIA requests, which will help increase transparency for citizens and other users. Fiscal services constantly strives to be proactive and innovative, and we try to do more with less. As a result, our department is required to utilize technology as much as we possibly can. We continue to automate, improve, and expand our processes whenever we can, and we work to improve efficiencies and increase capacity. Fiscal services strives to promote a high quality of life for our employees and the citizens, so they can enjoy everything that Kent County has to offer. We work to ensure that county facilities are safe places to work and for citizens to visit and conduct business. We provide support services to departments and assist with grant requirements to increase funding and expand resources in areas that promote safety and a high quality of life. One of the goals of fiscal services is to coordinate the county's annual audit process and ensure that a comprehensive annual financial report, commonly referred to as the CAFR, is distributed within the state mandated timeframe. The objective of this goal is to distribute the CAFR within 180 days of the county's fiscal year-end. Results on this slide show that we have consistently achieved this goal. In addition to distributing the CAFR timely, we have the objective to earn the accreditation for the Government Finance Officers Association and receive the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. Results on this slide show that we have received that award for the past 16 consecutive years. Another key goal is to improve, or to prepare and maintain the operating and capital improvement budget that is responsive to the county. The objective is to prepare the operating budget and capital budget for adoption prior to December 31st each year. Results on this slide show that we have consistently achieved this goal as well. Next, I would like to talk to you about some significant accomplishments in fiscal services. In 2016, purchasing manager Calvin Brinks was awarded the Marvin F. Clang Award from the Michigan Public Purchasing Association. This is the highest honor that the MPPOA can bestow. The Marvin F. Clang Award is named for the longtime purchasing director for the city of Detroit. For more than 30 years, Marvin had, was held in the highest regard, the ideals for which purchasing stands. Those ideals are respect for the public trust, a strong commitment to ethics, and encouragement of the public purchasing profession. In 2017, the Michigan Purchasing Officers Association awarded the purchasing division the Purchasing Agency of the Year Award. This award recognizes an entity for work or innovations in public purchasing, involvement within the community, and contributions to the MPPOA and the purchasing profession. The intent of the award is to recognize a group that has completed a unique or special project and who has demonstrated outstanding services to the procurement profession within the past year. The fleet services and purchasing supervisors have successfully completed and passed the stringent Michigan UST system exam, and they are both certified as Class A and Class B operators. What this means is that a Class A operator is a person who is primarily responsible to operate and maintain the underground storage tank systems. For a typical gas station, it would be the owner of the station. For a large corporation, it may be a manager or somebody who is responsible for tank operations. The Class A operator can also be a Class B operator, as long as he or she has passed the Class B exam as well. A Class B operator is someone who implements the day-to-day aspects of operating, maintaining, and record-keeping for the underground storage tank system. Again, for a gas station, this would be the owner. For a large corporation, it is somebody that they have contracted with to maintain the tanks. A broad knowledge required for the Class A operator. However, for a Class B operator, you have to know, have an in-depth knowledge of the tank system operation and maintenance. We are required by Michigan State law to have one certified Class A and one certified Class B operator. We are lucky enough to have two individuals who are certified as both a Class A and a Class B operator. Eric, who's our fleet supervisor, and Joni, who's the purchasing supervisor, are both Class A and classified. Next, I would like to talk about some key collaborations. Purchasing has upgraded an innovative procurement software system for the county and local agency users. They have participated in the development and implementation of the county and airport authority financial software systems, and they have created business opportunities by issuing over 265 solicitations and negotiating numerous for county departments. Fleet services is installing public safety, emergency, and communication equipment that was formally contracted out to a vendor. Previously, the work was outsourced, and it took two to three weeks to complete the work and install the equipment. Fleet services is completing the installation in two days at a significantly reduced cost. Fleet services has also upgraded tech to increase capacity, efficiency, and reduce cost. Network drops were added. Toughbook computers were purchased and are being used. Portable work punches were added, which allows the mechanics to quickly access tools and have them conveniently located closer to their work area. Stock inventory was relocated closer to the work area, and a vehicle lift was added. 10 vehicles have been added to the fleet service division, most for school resource officers and other county operations. And we anticipate that additional vehicles will be purchased in the future. As a result, fleet services is being proactive to handle the increased workload without compromising service to departments. Central services has added equipment to digitize legacy microfilm and microfiche documents and store them electronically in ONBase. The microfilm staff use the equipment to convert impletry for human resources from microfiche to ONBase. Central services is also utilizing equipment that they currently have to expand the folding and stuffing services that they provide. This work was previously subcontracted to vendors, and the change by having more departments involved in using central services has resulted in faster turnaround time and a significantly reduced cost for departments. Risk management is working to promote a safe working environment. They are working with facilities and the sheriff's department to provide active assailant response training to all employees and to conduct intruder drills and promote building The central services division provides printing services for the city of Grand Rapids and several other municipalities. Approximately 280 per year are from outside agencies. We provide these services to the local municipalities at a cost to them that is less than what they would pay to an outside vendor. The revenues we receive from these services helps to reduce the overall cost for central services, and this savings is passed on to all of the county departments through the cost allocation plan. During 2016, the county assisted the city of Grand Rapids with issuing a Grand River flood walls improvements and utilizing the county's AAA credit rating to obtain a lower interest rate and provide additional savings. Improving and maintaining the flood-- Improving and maintaining the flood walls benefits taxpayers of both the City of Grand Rapids and the county. Without the county's AAA credit rating, the city would not have been able to achieve the additional interest savings that they did. Looking ahead, Fiscal Services Payroll Division is working on implementing a new payroll software system. Fleet Services is working to provide real-time vehicle maintenance and assignment status, and Central Services is working to leverage technology to improve efficiencies by modernizing the microfilm, microfilming process for the court records, as a department Fiscal Services continues to review processes and implement improvements as they are discovered. This concludes my Performance Measures presentation. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Cornick.
Thank you, Chair. I looked at your Risk Management page here, and the thing that jumped out at me was the Workers' Comp, number of lost workdays, and it looks like it was really high in 2014 and has decreased a little bit. But you said that there is a promoting safe working environment at the Sheriff's Department. Is that where most of our Workers' Comp claims come from? And what specifically are we doing to try to reduce the severity? Because there's 81 lost days per claim seems a little bit.
We continue to, I would say, a lot of them relate to the Sheriff's Department. We continue to try to do things to eliminate them. However, it's difficult with the Sheriff's Department because their interactions with citizens and things like that makes it difficult for us to control what might happen to an officer when they're out arresting.
Is that where the majority of these claims come from?
I would say a majority of our claims are from Sheriff's Department. You would agree?
As well as juvenile detention.
We also, we have ones with the inmates as well at the jail.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions for Francie? I'm sorry, Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you, Chair. You have some cost savings here on pre-sorting and so forth of a few thousand dollars, and you mentioned the flood wall. How much are these on that, direct or indirect?
I don't have those numbers exactly of what the savings were.
Just give me a rough.
I would say it was probably about $300,000 to $400,000.
Okay, I like to hear those kinds of numbers.
So it was quite significant.
Is there other areas where we can save thousands of dollars? Let's say $50,000 on up. Is there any other areas where you're looking or working on things that make us more efficient and still keep our high standards?
Well, in 2017, we did, you're aware that we did do some bond refundings, which is, which are saving us additional dollars there, which were very substantial. We are always looking for ways that we can reduce costs. Having our AAA credit rating does help out with a lot of our bond issues, along with the lower interest rates that we are seeing right now in the market. That's one of the reasons we did some of those refundings this year.
I think that'd be a nice measure to have. These took place every year, and what you're doing and what you're looking at.
Yeah.
It'd be really important for us to see where it's happening.
I can provide that information.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Good report.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I want to follow up also on the Risk Management numbers that I've seen here. The report suggests that you have recorded 16 general liability claims in 17.
But we expect in 17.
Okay, and had 16 in 16, or 12?
We had 12 in 2016.
But what I'm curious on is the total amount paid line. Is that telling us that of those 12, 16 claims, whatever, that you totally paid out $21,500 in compensation to resolve those?
Yes, a lot of the claims have been very small. Although we've had claims, they have been very, they haven't been anything major, they've been small claims.
Okay, wasn't quite the case in 2015, but.
We had a number of situations that resulted in higher amounts back then.
Do we track our cost of defense as well?
We do have that information. Typically, we try to use our own counsel in-house for some of that information, or some of the.
Did you still track that, even if you use in-house counsel to do that?
No, we don't track in-house counsel.
They're the most valuable counsel we have.
That would require them to keep track of their hours that they spend related to risk management.
What's wrong with that?
As opposed to other county departments.
Life by the six-minute increment.
All right, losing battle now when I see that. So I have one other question. Were you involved in the procurement of the health record system at Network 180? Did you assist in that?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
I see that you're digitizing the microfilm and the microfiche, which takes me back to my academic days. So, thank you for doing that. The, I know that we are contracting to turn some of our paper over in the Drain Commissioner and digitizing that. Have you looked into whether it makes sense to procure the equipment to digitize paper versus contracting?
I was not aware that the Drain Commission was turning that over to outsource it. We can look into what we could do to help out with that. We do have equipment, and one of the reasons we're looking at changing over the, getting away from the microfiche and microfilm is because of the equipment is not being updated regularly, and there are very limited number of vendors out there where you can purchase the equipment and the chemicals for it, and it's kind of going to the electronic world. So that's why we're working to try to save money and update that equipment and do it more in a digital format. We do have equipment, but I'm not aware of the Drain Commissioner. We can, we can work on that. Oh, Cal says we are.
We are, okay, good, okay.
I wasn't aware of that.
Great, I know that there's a lot of departments that are, you know, looking to digitize. I know that was one of the issues that we were talking about when we were investigating 82 Ionia, so.
The Department also is working to digitize a lot of their records, too. Know that that's one of the outputs of the work we're doing with the Drain Commission.
Great.
Any other questions for Francie? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to item five. Wayman, you.
Sure, I will. This is a request to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the employee plan, pay range, and wage changes effective January 2018. Approximately 257 county clerical, professional, and management positions are covered under the Managed Pay Plan Pay Structure. As authorized by the Board of Commissioners, the Managed Pay Plan Administrative Process provides for periodic review and adjustment of the pay structure for MPP positions. Human Resources recommends that the MPP pay structure increase by 2% to maintain alignment with the market. MPP employees who meet performance expectations receive a 2% wage increase, wage increase, and that an additional $180,000 be allocated as part of a multi-year strategy to address employee advancement through the pay range. And the wage increases are affected with the applicable pay period that contains January 1, 2018. Total increase to salary is $631,131.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cornick, supported by Commissioner Vaughn. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes, Wayman, we fell behind there for a few years, and we did a little bit of a catch-up, and this $180,000 is part of that catch-up. Where are we on that catch-up?
I want to have Amy Rolston from our Human Resources Department. She's ready for that question.
Okay. You're ready for it.
Good morning.
I'm ready for it, too.
Good question. Over the past several years, we've been, as you know, moving to make sure that there is a mechanism to move people through the pay range for MPP up to the point of midpoint, which we attempt to match up with the market rate for a fully functional person in their job. We're at the point now where we don't have any catch-up work, so we're all caught up, and it's just maintaining that from a go-forward basis.
So all the employees are really happy right now?
We're at the point now where there is no catch-up, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Bukowski.
All right, thank you. In some of our contracts that we approved a year ago, we had a two-tier, or various benefits were two-tier. I don't know if wages were two-tier. Is there a two-tier system in the MPP plan?
There is not a two-tier system for wages. Usually, what we do in the MPP is if we find that a job needs to be reclassified, we wait until people leave the job, and we do it at that time. So de facto, it works in a similar way, but it isn't as formal as what we would have in the unions, because we don't have to negotiate that. The time off is the same, so if we do a two-tier time-off system in the unions, it also exists in the MPP in a formal way.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to items. Labor Agreement, Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association, Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to approve a five-year labor agreement for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2022 between the County of Kent, the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney, and the Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association, and to authorize the Board Chair or Designee to sign the agreement. The Negotiation Committee recommends approval of a five-year labor agreement with the Kent County Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Association. Wages will increase 2% annually, effectively in the applicable pay period each year. Either party may reopen the agreement during 2020 with regards to wages. In addition, the union may reopen the agreement regarding wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase greater than the 2% for all employees in another bargaining unit, except an increase awarded by an Act 312 arbitrator, or for all MPP employees. In 2008, the healthcare out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. The six-month period for life insurance and supplemental life insurance eligibility is eliminated. The total five-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $1,130,809.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Steck.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Ponstein. Any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Volter. Amy, yes. I don't know if Phil's going to know the answer.
Stephanie Hernandez, who is one of our HR managers, was the lead on this negotiation, so I'm going to defer to Stephanie to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't know if there's anything about the negotiations, but on the six-month waiting period for life insurance, removing that, now obviously, it's going to cost more to do it six months ahead of time, but does the rate the insurance company charges higher by not waiting or waiting that six month?
The rate is not impacted by that change.
Not at all? And then the supplemental insurance, just so I'm clear, that's picked up by the employee?
That's correct.
And that can be rejected by the life insurance company? If they find that there's a higher risk than they want to take?
I guess, in theory, they could, but I don't, I mean, it would, it's paperwork that the individuals have to complete in order to get that supplement, but I don't, I've never seen them reject that. Yeah, I, my understanding, and Dan, I know you probably know more about this than me, but my understanding is there is a guaranteed issue amount that applies under certain circumstances, including when you're hired. So if you do it right away when you're hired, then they can't deny you based on your health circumstances, but if you do it ad hoc four years later, then they're going to ask some medical questions and may reject you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ponstein asked a question I was going to ask. I do have just a follow-up. The members of the union, 34 members of these are all licensed attorneys?
That's correct.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, sorry, my hobgoblin. Since this is the first time this contract is renewed since we started the two-tier system, is there a two-tier benefit system in this?
They actually, the last time they renewed their contract, they did a two-year agreement in the dual-tier wages and time-off with, or not wages, the dual-tier vacation and personal time was in there, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions today? All right, seeing none, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on to item seven. Human Resources Labor Agreement, Circuit Court Referee Association, Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to the Board of Commissioners to approve a three-year labor agreement for January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2020 between the County of Kent, 17th Circuit Court, and the Circuit Court Referee Association, and to authorize the Board Chair or Designee to sign the agreement. The Negotiation Committee recommends approval of a three-year labor agreement with the Circuit Court Referee Association. Wages will increase 2% annually, effective in the applicable pay period each year. The union may reopen the agreement regarding wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase 2% for all employees in another bargaining unit or for all MPP employees. A second tier of paid time-off and vacation accrual will be implemented for employees hired on or after January 1 of 2019. In 2018, the healthcare out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. The six-month waiting period for life insurance and supplemental life insurability is eliminated. The total three-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $109,254.
All right, you have a motion. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Brevi.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Vaughn. Any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Steck.
I was thinking that one of our strategies was to go to five-year contracts as we did with the last one. Did we try to do a five-year, and we couldn't get a five-year contract?
We did try to do a five-year with this contract as well, because they did bring it back to their members who did not want the five-year.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, since the contracts all seem to be pretty well lockstep except for the three- and five-year issue, who's the lead bargaining unit in the sense that, you know, like, at least on the news, when the UAW, they kind of pick one of the big three to kind of beat up on, and the other two follow suit? Who leads with us, or is it just a, I won't fill in the blank?
We actually have four contracts that were set to expire at the end of this year, and then the rest of the contracts are set to expire next year. So when we come up with our strategy, we come up with a strategy that will cover all of the contracts, is our goal. And then as we go through those, there are some modifications that we have to make depending on those units, but we have the four that are in this year that are, I guess, first in the process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, maybe it's too far in the weeds in the sense that, you know, I mean, you're bargaining with four units at the same time, you being plural, but so that if one agreed to a 1.75% raise, do you talk to the other three to try to get them go down to 1.75 or to go up, or, you know, I mean, or are you all in the same room at the same time?
We're not all in the same room at the same time. We negotiate with contracts separately, but we're very cognizant of what's going on with all of the negotiations as we're talking to, specifically, we were meeting with the three groups, and we were all in communication of what was going on and what was being offered at that point, so we don't end up in a situation like that.
Okay, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Any other questions on item seven? Seeing none, all in support? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to item eight. Human Resources Labor Agreement, Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers Local 214. Parks, Wayman.
Yes, this is a request to approve a five-year labor agreement for the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2022 between the County of Kent and Parks Department, Teamsters State, County and Municipal Workers Local 214, and to authorize the Board Chair or Designee to sign the agreement. The Negotiating Committee recommends approval of a five-year labor agreement with the Teamsters Union, which has 16 members. Wages will increase 2% annually, effective in the applicable pay period each year. Either party may reopen the agreement during the 2020 year with regards to wages. In addition to the union, in addition, the union may reopen the agreement regarding wages if the county agrees to an annual across-the-board increase greater than 2% on all employees in another bargaining unit or for all MPP employees. A second time-off and vacation accrual will be implemented for employees hired on or after January 2019. In 2018. In 2018, the healthcare out-of-pocket maximum is increased by $1,000, and the prescription out-of-pocket maximum is reduced by $1,000. The six-month waiting period for life insurance and supplemental life insurance eligibility is eliminated. The total five-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $330,642.
Do I have a motion?
Almost second.
By Commissioner Vok, supported by Commissioners Skex. All right, any questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Amy and Tina, that represented a lot of work on your part. On to item nine, Commissioner Misalanius. Commissioner Brevi?
Thank you, Chair. I have two items. The first is tomorrow, Wednesday, 1:00 at the Kent County Health Department, we have our lead task force meeting. Everyone's invited. And then on Thursday, we have the Community Health Advisory Committee at 12:00, again at the Health Department, and lunch will be served. You're welcome to come for a free lunch and conversation.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'll, I'll keep it brief. I seem to get on a lot of conference calls with NACO. So we had a kind of review last week of the, what's going on in Washington, just quite lengthy, but the big thing is, is the one thing I wanted to highlight is the tax bill. I know NACO has been advocating the support of tax-exempt bonds. Both of those seem to have made it through the process, both in the House and the Senate versions. A couple of things to maybe just keep on our radar, and you can draw your own conclusions, but within the tax-exempt bonds, sporting stadiums and complexes will no longer be eligible for tax-exempt bonds. The other thing that they've also put into this, I often argue the differences between callable and non-callable bonds, and how one upfront's going to probably be cheaper than the other. They have added to the law that if you issue tax-exempt bonds and they are callable, when they become callable, they're no longer tax-exempt. And I'm sure in the next two weeks of lobbying, the bond companies that profit heavily off of that practice is going to be lobbying to remove that, but that is something to keep in mind when we issue bonds, is it going to be a huge difference between callable and non-callable bonds.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner Melton?
Just a quick up-brief, because I'm sure you are all dying to know. I am having foot surgery on Friday, so I will not be at the next meeting. I need to be on bedrest for 14 days, which will be quite a stretch, so if I were all of you, I would look and make sure you know my number, and if it shows up every day or every hour by every hour, then you might want to just put me through to your voicemail, because it's very hard for me to imagine 14 days of just lying there. So, anyway, that is my, my update.
All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.